Hi, Dan.
Hey, Dan. I don't know if he'll be coming or not. Yeah, I don't know if he'll be coming or not for sure. We'll find out.
Thank you.
...
Yes? Hey, there's an envelope sent on Casey's desk, the receptionist desk. He's got a plan and that's got Betsy's signature. Can you bring that down?
Sure, Dan, I'll get it.
Sorry, this is my son's computer. This is Dr. Radke.
Everyone, to the September 9th meeting of the Patent Township Board of Supervisors, I would like to remind everyone that to make a public comment, when you come up to the mic, state your name and your address. And anybody who wishes to make a comment who is not in the room may do so by dialing the number that I believe you can see along the front of the table here and also on the podium. And with that, oh, and I'd like to mention that two of our supervisors are attending the zoo. So with that, I would like to invite all who are able to stand and join me in the pledge, and the flag is conveniently behind me. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a new republic which stands one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are going to start the meeting as usual with a call for public comments. If there's anybody who wishes to make a contribution that is not already addressed in the agenda to come, you may do so at this point. Let's see, oh, Mr. Abrams.
Just wanted to note that we observe National Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm not sure if it's month or week, but it's a very important event to think about. And I know the Electronic Dance Music Station on Sirius is dedicating it to Avicii, who took his own life a couple of years ago.
Thank you for that. Any additional comments? We are going to go now to the public hearing presentation part of the program. So we're going to start with the presentation of the sketch plan for the Abington Equine Hospital, which is to be located on, or proposed to be located on West Buffalo Run Road.
Bob. AT.
I'm sorry?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. The task before the board is not to make comments on the plan. This plan, a presentation of this sketch plan is optional. It does help to give the board a more concrete picture of what is being proposed. The challenge before the board is to consider the request for Patent Township Board to underwrite the grant application for the Keystone, Keystone Communities Program under the Department of Community and Economic Development. So we are going to look at the economic plan in detail.
And we have representatives from Hobaker Engineering. I believe we have Dr. Radke with us also. If one of you want to start the presentation on the sketch plan, we'll do that first. And then we can, if you have other members of your team you'd like to introduce, go ahead and do that. And then after that, we'll talk about the grant a little bit.
Sure. I'm Bob Myers with Hobaker Engineering. Our sketch plan shows a 6,300 square foot equine hospital that'll be located on the tract, along with a 80 by 160 equine arena that Dr. Kat will be able to use, you know, just test the animals out during, you know, the treatment. We have some room for trailer parking. There's adequate room for, you know, patrons coming to check on their animals while they're there, drop off and pickup. Stormwater will be located on the down, between Buffalo Run Road and the animal hospital. Everything, you know, basically sheet flows down toward the road now, so we would capture it and discharge it at a lesser quantity than is discharged there today, you know, to meet the requirements of the ordinance. The site would have, you know, some well onsite septic. And I guess in a nutshell, that's kind of on my end. Kat, would you like to talk to the board or?
Sure, I'm happy to weigh in. I don't know if you can see me here, but...
All right, can you turn your video back on, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Okay.
Here we go.
There you go.
There we go. Hi, nice to see everyone. Yeah, basically, we're looking to offer a service that just isn't offered in this area. We're looking to be kind of a referral level of care for our equine community members and basically happy to follow all the township's guidelines and just wanted to put the project in front of you early so we could get your feedback and make sure we do it right.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Do...
Yeah, well, let's talk about grant funding a little bit, then we can...
Okay, you want to take that, Doug?
Yeah, well, I'm going to call on...
Or Larry?
Mr. Klein, who's also called there under Teresa Sparassino. That's, there's our, here's our friend Leroy Klein. Leroy, you want to tell the board about this grant opportunity?
Yes, I certainly will. Thanks. It's, it's nice to see all of you, even if it's on a computer screen. Let me tell you a little bit about what we're proposing. Patent Township, because of the leadership of Dr. Radke, was able to secure a $370,000 Keystone Community Grant. To my knowledge, this is the first time Patent Township has received Keystone Community money. We've worked together to do Radke and Automotive and PIBs, but this is a new program. The program provides money for selective projects on the basis of defined criteria. That criteria includes community impact, economic impact, level of private sector investment, new operational capacities, project readiness, and strategic importance. We developed collectively an application following the guidelines of the program and the criteria and received the $370,000 award. In your packet that Doug advanced, there is an enclosure that has, to the left, a picture of a horse. It's actually labeled enclosure four in your packet.
There we go.
Mr. Erickson, I would put on one page this, this process. And so that's what this page is. What would happen is we would establish, as we have in all of our other grant agreements, a construction account that is specific for this particular project. And we would deposit in that construction account the full value of the onsite work for this project. In this case, the budget is $426,817. That number is actually a number that would be established in a public bidding process that's further on down in this outline. But the thing I wanted the township to understand is it's not township funds, township financial responsibility, or a township funding commitment. It is a construction account that's fully funded by the project. The site work that will be done on this project requires the formal state standard of prevailing wage. There will be performance bond requirements and the typical insurance requirements. There will be a public bidding process. One of the reasons why we're asking for your consideration is because Patent Township has established a process and credentials with DCED and PennDOT that makes this process very helpful. We would bid the document following all the township protocols and all the state protocols. On the basis of a competitive bidding process, we would establish the amount for the site improvements. That amount would be deposited. We would commence the work with the approval of the township. The payment request for reimbursement of the work that was completed is done electronically. It will be sent to DCED. They approve the payment request form in advance. They review the invoice consistent with the original grant application, and they release the funds. When the funds are released, they are released to the Patent Township construction account. Patent Township takes the money from DCED that's in that construction account and awards it back to Abington Equine. And then with the release of those funds, we close out the construction account and close out the various documentation. As you know, we're very careful about the eligibility standards. In a project that we advanced, we have included excavation, sanitary sewer, storm water, electric and water system, all eligible costs. We reviewed those costs in advance with DCED. So I think I can report with some confidence that what we're really about is a competitive bid process. We'd respectfully request your assistance with that. And with the documentation of the actual bid and the submission of the reimbursement forms, we can advance the project. Are there any questions about that process or the grant itself?
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn that question over to other board members. Are there any questions for, I apologize, I forgot your name?
Well, any aspect of the process of the project at this point?
Yeah.
I have two questions.
Dan, go ahead, please.
Doug?
Yep.
I presume the township administering this grant is very similar to the Burnell Road type thing where we, we're the recipient of the funds, they just go through us, we really don't contribute any money of our own towards...
Right, correct. We would, we would take part of those funds, probably hire an inspector to oversee the work that's being done. And then there's, might be a little other cost in some administrative facts, but in essence, it'd be very, very low cost to us.
And the second question, it was more about process. I know a sketch plan normally, the, the board reviews it and then can forward it on to the planning commission. We're also considering supporting their request to sponsor the, the grant, the application. Which comes first? I mean, do we have to get the planning commission to review it and return it back to us before we can sponsor?
No, we can agree to sponsor the grant. We're just in, it's, this is an agreement in principle at this point. They will have to go through the whole land development process. So you will see this again at some point, hopefully in the next few months. Sketch plan, although I forgot to give it to Nicole, the planning commission will see next week also, just, it's an informal review. But like I said, they'll have to come back with their land development plan, just like we did with all these and other developments, and we'll go through that in detail. Only after that will they be able to do the work. So in the meantime, Mr. Klein and I will work out a draft agreement between Dr. Radke and Abington Equine Hospital and the township to indemnize and put all what Mr. Klein said into an agreement form. Any other questions? Anita has a question.
Anita, yeah. Thanks for the help.
Yes, if all goes well, what is the opening date that you hope the facility will be up and running?
Dr. Radke?
Well, we're looking to break ground in the spring after we get all the proper, all the proper certificates and things like that.
All the permits, yes.
All the permits, yeah. So, and then after that, you know, it'll probably be middle of the winter, I'd say.
Great.
I don't know if it got mentioned, but currently you need this sort of work done for your, your horse. You either end up going to University of Pennsylvania or up to, I think, Cornell up in Ithaca, New York. Those are the, those are the other closest facilities at this point.
Or the, I guess the ambulatory service attends to some of the cases, but it's not perfect.
Yeah, but the, the surgery part of it, you have to go either Philadelphia or Ithaca.
There's one that's down in Somerset as well, a private practice there. There's one surgeon there. But for any kind of supportive care, you really do have to travel several hours. So sometimes you just don't have that with horses, and you can lose them on a trailer, and that's a big animal to be kind of flopping around in a trailer on an icy road. So we're trying to, we're trying to support the community because we really do have a lot of horses here. But also the Grange Fairgrounds bring up quite a few every year, as well as the Coker Show brings quite a few every year. So we just need a little bit better infrastructure to help support them.
Pam, did you have anything to say? I can't see all of the people in the audience, all of them, so.
No, you do it.
I do want to add, if all other board members have made a comment, I certainly agree with Mr. Trevania. That was my main concern. What's the risk to us? I certainly didn't see any in reading over your proposal. But I also want to compliment you on the thoroughness of the research, of the marketing aspect of this. It does seem like you have done that.
Who's been preparing for quite a while.
I think it will be a great asset, not just to Patent Township, but to Center County and the greater region, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for considering this.
Elliot has a question.
Elliot, yes.
So basically, it doesn't look like the township would get saddled by the debt, and so we should gallop forward.
Oh, I'm going to have to trot out...
Cali Ho.
I'm going to have to trot out my book of horse jokes. Elliot, okay.
Madam Chair, I would like to propose a motion that we approve the Patent Township sponsorship of the... of this proposed grant application.
Do I have a second?
Second. Pam Robb.
You've got a second?
Second, Pam Robb.
Great, yeah, Pam Robb. And I do want to mention the posting went at an appropriate time of the proposed development of this property. I'm assuming that we're going to go ahead and do that.
Pardon?
Posting of a sign.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I've got a nasal pain.
Oh, yeah, we will do that when appropriate.
That would be probably a little further down the road, as it were. Okay. Thank you so much.
We need a vote.
Oh, yes, those in favor, or any discussion now that we have the motion second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, those in favor of extending the grant to the Abington Equine, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you and good luck to you.
Madam Chair, I would like to then ... I don't think we need a motion to forward this to the planning commission.
No, no.
Consensus is we will forward this to the planning commission.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that's normal. We're on a little bit of a backward schedule this month. Planning commission's meeting next week, so.
Great. Thank you. Anything else on this item? Don't want to rush away from it. The second item under our public hearing and public presentation ...
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Will be a presentation from Mr. Corey Miller. And I'd like to preface this by saying the UAJA, as always, is thinking outside the box. He's sort of killing two birds with one stone. So enough of the metaphors. What Mr. Miller and the UAJA propose to do with the solar, the residential solar project is to both reduce nitrous oxides, which contribute to the pollution of the water, and at the same time reduce carbon emissions that will help us meet our emission goals for the climate action plans. So, Mr. Miller, thank you very much.
Thank you. We did kind of stumble upon this sort of by accident. UAJA has been very deeply involved in working on solar projects at our own facility, and in fact, we're about to break ground on the second phase, which will put us up at five megawatts of solar, which is as far as we can go on the site by law. So then we started looking at other places because we're interested in trying to continue doing solar because of the water quality impact that it can have, not just to our own local watershed, but also the Chesapeake Bay in general. So we had to get a little creative, and we started looking around to figure out, well, where could we put more solar panels? And one of the options that we came up with was frankly putting them on people's houses and commercial buildings in the center region. The way that this would work, and the reason why we went down this road, is it's really very similar to what we do with our own solar projects now, we involve a third party who captures the tax benefit, and then after a period of time where they own it, we eventually buy it from them, and then we get the benefit of the solar project from that point forward. So the key is how do you get the tax benefit to move the project from public ownership to private ownership to public ownership? You have to have that private partnership or the whole thing doesn't work because a municipal authority or municipality cannot get a tax benefit since we don't pay any taxes. So that's how we got to this point. Just flip to the next slide, please. This is a description of how this would work. So again, the only difference between what we do now and what we do with this program is currently our third-party owner is putting the solar panels on UAJA property. The difference here would be the panels would be put on residential homes and commercial businesses and nonprofit organizations, et cetera, within the center region. We're targeting in this pilot project, we looked at limiting it to current customers of UAJA, and the reason for that is we already have a billing relationship with them, so it's very easy for us to just tack on another billing item on the quarterly bill to get the money back from the property owner who we deal with. This is an entirely voluntary program. Nobody's forced to do this. They can decide to participate or not on their own. The benefit is that in talking with solar installers in the region, one of the biggest stumbling blocks to installing solar is the upfront financing cost to the homeowner. There are people in the region that have the money, that they can just go ahead and put solar panels on the roof. There are people that have the money but might have something better to do with that money. And then there are people that don't have the money to put solar panels on the roof. By using UAJA's funding ability, municipal authorities are particularly good at borrowing money at low interest rates and then paying for those bonds over by basically collecting revenue. So we would have a revenue stream coming in from the homeowner that would pay for the bond, the debt service on the bonds, over a period of time, typically 20 years. That's what we're targeting for this. So originally, I think what was in your information, you were looking at charging them a per kilowatt-hour basis, so we were basically going to charge them for the electricity. Part of our legal review, we've determined that that is actually not possible because if we charge for electricity, then we are in fact selling electricity, which is not allowable under the Municipal Authorities Act. And this was a question that I believe, Dan, you had forwarded on from one of the residents of the region. So it was a very good question. We were already on that track, we made that change since we sent the materials to you. So now what it would involve is a fixed payment on a quarterly basis to UAJA rather than a charge per kilowatt. Very similar to your sewer bill, you get a fixed charge every quarter, it never changes. So that payment we're expecting would go over a period of about 20 years. At the end of the 20-year period, the homeowner has the option to take ownership of the solar facilities. Then from that point on, they get the power for free, it's theirs. And the reason they can do that is we have financed it, we have gotten our money back. UAJA has gotten the investment back from that solar project, and so technically we don't need any more money, so we can give it to the property owner, it's theirs. So this is really what it is. It's a financing project to allow the residents to be able to support the goals and objectives of the region to reach the greenhouse gas emissions. What does UAJA have to do with the mix sides? So again, this goes back to the nitrous oxide emissions. As we do more and more greenhouse gas emission reduction through solar that UAJA would own, we get to use that nitrous oxide reduction against the Chesapeake Bay requirements for UAJA. This gives us capacity that we can use to support the growth and development that is in the contract plan without having to charge additional fees for it for the developers. So it's kind of a using the environment to gain an environmental credit so that we can continue to grow, that's what we're looking at here. We are not anywhere near being ready to roll this project out. What we have come to you for is we are at the point now where we're going to start spending a bit more money. Currently, it's just been a little bit here and there on, you know, some legal questions and things like that. We have to go a lot deeper into the legal questions, and we have to go start working up the draft agreements that would be through for the homeowners, for the third party, et cetera. So it's getting to be to the point where we're going to start spending more money. UAJA was originally formed as a sewer authority. That is the purpose that you, the five municipalities, put us together for. And because this is significantly different than dealing with sewage, we thought it would be really good to know that it's okay with the municipalities that formed us if we go down this route. We think that this is a project that supports the goals and objectives of the municipalities. We think that we are well-suited to do this. We also believe that there are other ways to do this. A municipality can do it on their own, you could form another municipal authority to do this. It's considered a gift, it's your idea now, do what you want with it. But UAJA is well-suited to do this because we have that billing relationship and we have the financial wherewithal to make this happen. So that's where we are. We're not asking for you to technically endorse this because we're not done with it. What we're really looking for, and I had no way to, I couldn't figure out the word to use, was what we're looking for is a head nod, that you understand that we are going to spend some money to find out the answers that remain, and that if we find out that everything works, we're going to proceed to put the rest of the package together and hopefully roll this out sometime in the near future. It will go back to CAG for a final presentation. If we find out it will work, if we find out it doesn't work, well, unfortunately, you probably just get a notice that says, "The whole thing fell apart, it's not going to work." That's it. So that's where we are, is we're basically looking for, are there any of the municipalities that formed UAJA that objects strongly to us continuing to look at this?
Thank you, Pam. Yes, please.
Well, I'd be opposed to it if you restricted it to people only on the sewer system because you're not doing this as a sewer authority, you're doing this in another capacity, which you talked about. And I think you got computers that could figure out how to bill people that weren't on the sewer.
Well, we can do that. And again, this is a pilot program. This would be, you know, we do 300 homes, and then if everything was successful, we could expand the program and go further than that. I think you're right, we probably can go beyond just sewer customers.
I have a follow-up on that. Is there much of a price differential if you stuck just with the customers with whom you have a relationship versus adding, opening it up to others right away?
It wouldn't be that significant. The only difference is that, and this is part of what we haven't worked out, what happens if somebody doesn't pay the bill? What mechanism do we have to make them pay the bill? So we know that we have that mechanism set up for our existing customers. For a new entity that is not a sewer customer, we just have to work out that detail. But we can certainly add that to the list and look at it.
Yes, Dan.
That addresses one of my questions about a customer defaulting on payment. I know that's something you have to work out anyway. But another issue would be if the customer sells their house, does the new owner, can the new owner opt out even though the solar system is already installed on their roof? Or that, another thing that would have to be worked out.
There would probably, because there's a cost for removing the solar panels from the roof, there would probably be a fee for removing the solar panels from the roof for opting out. The idea that we have is that the, just like sewer, your sewer service carries on with the next homeowner, the solar would carry on with the next homeowner as well. I expect that somebody looking to buy a house is going to look and say, "Wow, there's solar panels on that roof, I want that house." They're probably going to keep the solar panels on the roof. So it's a slightly different market.
But it's certainly something you'd have to address in the draft agreement.
Yes.
I have one more question.
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
Legal issues about, I guess a follow-up to the citizens' comment related to the authority, what authority, your authority has for this kind of project that's really beyond providing sewer service. Although you explained it very well, how it ties in in terms of reducing carbon emissions therefore, or nitrogen emissions, therefore you can use that as a process. So I'm just saying, I support the pilot project, but I think there needs to be clear determination on the legal basis for the sewer authority to be able to provide this service, which is not really specified as part of your authority's responsibility right now.
And that is exactly what we would do once we know that all the municipalities are okay with us proceeding. That is one of the very questions that is top on the list of answering, and we have a couple of attorneys that are going to dig really deep into that. I assume nobody else has been, has done, tried this, at least in Pennsylvania yet? Nobody has tried this in Pennsylvania yet.
Anita has a question.
Thank you, yes, Anita, thank you.
I have two questions. I'll ask them both at the same time. How do you plan to identify the 300 homes that would be part of the study? And secondly, I noted in the write-up that the generation of five megawatts of electricity is the maximum allowed under current Pennsylvania law for net metered applications. And in a parallel track, is that something that you would like to see increased, and is that something that down the line one should be thinking about contacting legislators to increase that level?
So let me answer the second one because I'll forget what you asked. The second one was, yes, we would like to see the legislators change that so that municipal authorities can not be limited by the five megawatts. We have plenty more land on site, we could generate a lot more electricity if we could. And then what was the first question? I forgot.
How the selection would be made through the 300.
Okay, the selection, right. So this is a voluntary program, so we would be looking for people to come to us and say, "I'm interested in having solar put on my house." The local solar installers are a good resource for this. They have already been contacted by multitudes of people, and those people have declined to put solar on their house many times for financial reasons. So it's a matter of going back to those people and saying, "Hey, there's this new program, maybe you want to consider it again and look at this." What we're trying to do is target solar facilities that would work from a solar perspective. Obviously, if you are going into, you know, the middle of Park Forest and you have all these oak trees, we don't want you to clear cut your house, your acreage, so that you can put solar. We'll find another place to put that. We're looking for a good mixture. Some of them will be marginal, some of them will be superstars, some of them will be just average. As long as the conglomerate makes the correct amount of energy to fund this, then we're in good shape.
Okay, Pam, okay, great. Yep, I'm looking for this here. Pam?
I just have a question. I think from your prior presentation, wasn't businesses included within the 300 businesses and homes?
Yes, we do. We call it a residential program, and that's probably a misnomer because we have changed since we started this. We now are including, and it's actually advantageous to us to look at facilities that have larger roofs, such as nonprofit organizations, churches, et cetera, and commercial establishments that have larger roof area.
Great. There are no more questions. I have a technical one on how the, and you don't need to get too technical, but I was curious about the computation of reduction in nitrous oxides. There must be some formula that you do that, use for that, and how would you sort of determine the ultimate maximum number of houses that obviously would increase the nitrous oxide that could be, that you could get credits for? Is that the correct process?
Yes, we produce, when we started looking at this, we just a bit about last year, we produced a report, it's about a 40-page report explaining to EPA and DEP how nitrous oxide offsets can work for a sewer authority or any wastewater treatment plant. EPA has come back and said, yes, that report is valid. So we're at the point now where we're looking for DEP to come up with a way to be able to attach those offsets to our treatment plant's NPS permit so that we can gain credit for them. They haven't done that yet.
So your trailblazers are not just in the setup of the list, but also in the ...
We're always asking DEP to do things that never have been told to do.
Great, well, Center County, once again, you know, is leading the way. Great. So I think at this point ...
I've got a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry, Doug, yep.
The board's done.
Yep, thank you, Doug.
Doug, is 300 a magic number that gets you to where you need to be, and can you go over that, or?
So it's not going to be exactly 300 homes, it's really, we're looking at three megawatts total.
Okay.
That's the magic number, it's not really homes.
And, you know, this is going to have to involve, you know, installation of smart meters and all that. Is the third-party vendor then going to maintain all that equipment?
So during the period of time on the day of the system, yes, they won't be managing and operating the system. So under the normal circumstances ... So, under the normal circumstances, the third-party owns the system for a period of about six years, and then it is transferred to the new owner. That's how you get the tax for it, and you can't transfer it any sooner than six years. So they would be operating it under contract from us, so we would be contracting to them to go out and keep track of these things. Most of these are done, it's smart metering, they are looked at through the internet and monitored, and typically, the maintenance people would be showing up before the homeowner even knew anything was wrong.
And then, when you're doing your legal research, if you should find out that a sewer authority can't do it, then can you ask your people to figure out who could do it?
Yes.
So in case we want to move forward?
Yes, we, we will do that, we'll make sure, yeah, one of the people that we are hiring is the, one of the two attorneys for the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Association. So we're pretty sure we're going to get a good answer.
Okay, thanks.
I'm actually wondering if you're going to have to establish a lottery system. I think there's going to be great demand in this, and 300 will go pretty quickly.
Well, since we have started going out to the municipalities, I can tell you that after each municipal meeting tomorrow, I will get phone calls from residents who have watched this meeting.
Good.
We already have a, a list that's being built of people that are interested. So it is going, I think you're right, it's going to snow all pretty quickly. Again, it's a pilot program, if it works, we'll do it again.
Well, we, we have our fingers crossed, yeah.
So it doesn't sound like there's any objection other than, so we're okay with continuing on.
So do we need to make a motion to officially endorse?
Well, that's why number six on, on your list is kind of vague, because I wasn't sure exactly what you were wanting.
Yeah, it's, we don't, we're not, it's not a finished product yet, we're not asking you to endorse, stuck with the word that I put in there, because I couldn't think of, how do I say, head nod for a municipality? But all we're making sure is that you know that we're doing this, and that you don't have any objections to us continuing to look into it.
Agreed.
So if we're there, then we'll go continue looking into it.
I don't hear any objections, so hearing none.
Go, go forward.
Take it forward, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, the next item is an update on a student project that is in the process of being started and run through the semester. I was approached again by the program at Penn State called the Community and Environment Development Major, they, they call themselves SEED, it's an easy way to remember, they call themselves seedlings. The purpose of that, this major, is for these students to get hands-on, physical and social science-based, look at different projects, the projects, different challenges, and they, one of the things that they do is find problems that need to be solved in the center region. So they approached me, um, the project that I suggested that they might be interested in pursuing is looking at the open space in Patton Township, specifically the Hawe Family Track, which I personally have walked many times and have a passion for, and I know that's shared by several people, but I'm wondering how many people actually know about it, and how many people use it, and what are the perceived possibilities of using, using that program? Three of the students were very excited by that, they each have backgrounds in various, different parts of that, one has an animal specialty, one a botany specialty, and one has sort of outdoor recreation. So I think they'll make a top-notch team. They are just getting started, they will be essentially creating a survey and delivering that through emails. We had actually talked to Doug Erickson about possibly having funds to do a postcard survey, which would make it a scientific survey, but those are not available, so they will be creative with other means of outreach. Other means could also include social media, next door or forest is a good example of that, plus Facebook, of course. So we will hear more from them, I suspect, or from me, at the next meeting. Any questions on that? It will just happen. Okay, we, thank you, that brings us to the public safety section, and it looks like Chief Jolly is getting up and ready to make a presentation.
Yeah, certainly, my computer's connected, so I apologize, but they're here. Another busy month in August for, for our agency, we had 96 traffic stops, wrote 17 citations, 10 parking tickets, and 27 female arrests, which is quite a jump, and we'll kind of work through that here as I give you my report. Some of the department notes, we had a female arrested and charged with theft, access device fraud, and corruption of minors. This stemmed from an incident where the female actually convinced a family friend to open up a checking account with a check that she knew was going to bounce. She subsequently then withdrew almost $4,000 before the bank was aware of the fraud. A 21-year-old male was charged with animal cruelty, he admitted to abusing a cat by punching it in the head and torso, and unfortunately, the animal did die as a result of that abuse. A 24-year-old male was arrested for the charge of simple assault and false imprisonment, and these charges stem from a domestic dispute where the male physically assaulted the female victim, and then physically prohibited her from coming home for help or assistance. We had a 43-year-old male and a 35-year-old female arrested and charged with theft and criminal mischief for an incident that occurred at a local hotel. The couple caused about $5,000 worth of damage to the room that they were staying in, and then also failed to pay for their stay, which totaled almost $900. Four individuals were arrested for retail theft, and eight for DUI, which is, is quite a jump, I'm sure you recognize that. We had three warrants that were served successfully out of the eight warrants that were attempted in the month of August. The new section here again, use of force, one officer did point their duty weapon in the direction of an individual who was being taken into custody while in possession of a stolen vehicle, that was during the month of August. Community relations, obviously we're very busy with schools being back in session, so officers in the morning hours and afternoon hours were very busy monitoring the school zones and watching the pickups and the school bus activity in, in our community. We had some concern about some of the pickup drop-off is, is kind of intermittent, so it wouldn't have been as big of an issue, but the pickup at all the schools, really in the township, a lot more parents were driving their students rather than using the public transportation. So we had many officers at all the locations to make sure the traffic worked, worked out, and actually it worked pretty flawlessly, we had just a little bit of delay, but we were able to get that worked out, so it actually worked out really well. Officer Sunderland conducted a child safety seat installation, and Officer McElrath actually attended a junior golf tournament at Top Trees, was just there to kind of help out and to answer questions about law enforcement, if anybody was interested. Some of them, monthly training and activities in August, the tactical response team trained on August 11th and then on the 25th. All the officers attended firearms training on the 10th and the 21st, and we are continuing to utilize the Fisherman's Paradise Fish Commission range, so we've got a great facility for us, and we appreciate them allowing us to use them. We discussed this earlier on, and this got postponed a couple times due to COVID, but finally, on August 14th, Officer Brian Schaefer was presented with the 2019 Center County Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award. There was a photo that it was in the agenda materials, also included in the packet though, myself and Officer Schaefer. The ceremony was held at the courthouse in Bellefonte with District Attorney Bernie Cantorna presenting the award. And again, just to, and we've talked about it before, but Officer Schaefer was nominated and selected for his life-saving actions during the shooting incident that occurred at the Ramada, and on January 24th of 2019. So obviously, we're very proud for him to receive the award, and also for his actions, and also there was a photo of the award that he received, so, it was a very nice, nice ceremony. Just a few letters of appreciation that we received throughout the month of August. The first one actually involves an individual who was in a hit-and-run automobile accident in Top Trees Avenue area. Just some of the, a few of the comments he had made that kind of stuck out, related to Officer Rob Carter, who had arrived to investigate this, says that his actions were professional, and he treated both me and the other driver with courtesy and respect. The other driver subsequently was arrested for DUI, but he talks about Officer Carter giving the other driver field sobriety tests, and mentioned, and I quote, "It looked like a police training video." So I love to hear that, that, I mean, you know, that he obviously was treating all the individuals with respect and dignity, even the individual that was being taken into custody. Said that Officer Finochio also arrived on scene, and his actions also were very respectful and very professional, and that the officer drew the profession when they arrested the other individual. We had a letter from an individual in the township who unfortunately lost a family pet, their dog had passed away, and she had actually contacted us for assistance in being able to remove the dog, she was being able to do it on her own, so our officers did assist her with that. And on August 18th of 2020, Officer Bardzel responded, responded to the Skytop Mountain Road to assist the state police, there was reported an unresponsive female, he got there and realized that the female was in the end stages of an opioid overdose, he did administer a dose of naloxone to the female, EMS arrived and continued life-saving measures, the female was transported to the hospital where she did recover, so we're very happy to be able to report that as well. The call list for the month of August, we had 389 calls, that's just up slightly from July, when we had 383. 63 of those were traffic incidents, again, you'll see a lot of the schools and the officers being present in school zones and helping out with the, the traffic there. And then 47 of those were EMS assists. And again, we saw the jump from the eight DUIs, that's high for us, four of those were results of motor vehicle crashes, but we also are conducting alcohol, with the Alcohol Task Force DUI details throughout the weekends, so you're going to see maybe a little increase numbers, getting intoxicated drivers off the streets. That is all I have for my report.
Do, do board members have any questions, Richie? I'm looking, as Pam does, yes. Pam, Ms. Rob.
Hey, I just have a question on traffic. Since CADA changed the bus schedule on Amberwood, going onto Valley Vista, not where Ponagy is and the like, have you had any traffic backup?
Not, not that I'm aware of, you know, the only thing that, that we've seen was traffic backing up from the middle school, as, right now, they are releasing sixth and seventh grade from the horseshoe parking lot, if you will, off of School Drive, so it was backing up onto Amberwood from School Drive. But we've worked with the school, and I think we've come up with a plan where we're not seeing the backup that we did see, not, I'm not familiar with anything related to CADA, though.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Oh, Dana, sure.
Chick-fil-A, traffic back, backup occasionally. I know, I've driven by a couple of times, or many times, many times there's no traffic backup, I guess it's just not, it's not lunchtime or whatever. But one, yesterday, I think I drove by, it was, it was, I believe around 1:30 or 2 o'clock, well after the lunch hour, for some reason, the traffic was backed up, both in the southbound side, people waiting to turn in because the, the line was already all the way to the street, and also several cars in the turn lane, northbound turn lane to get in. There was no Chick-fil-A person there directing traffic at that particular moment. I thought there was a, it worked out something with the Chick-fil-A manager, that they would have the traffic directors during their peak times.
Yeah, and honestly, I would know that 1:30 or 2 o'clock would be considered a peak time to, to them, yet generally, they do have somebody who is, is out there, a lot of times they have folks with iPads taking orders to try to expedite the drive-through experience. But we have, you know, we've spoken to the business owner about, you know, we suggested the two lines that they, they are currently using still, he, he can't explain why, you know, the business is booming like it's booming, they cannot use, from Chick-fil-A corporate, they cannot use the dining rooms at this point, so that obviously is adding to the traffic that we see in the drive-through. But yeah, we've continued to work with, with the business owner, we're happy for any suggestions that we could pass along, and we've, you know, we've tried to give them as many suggestions as we can, that we can think of, that can help alleviate. Recently here, though, they did just put in a no left turn out of the business, obviously a lot of times with any of the businesses, really unhappy to be concerned about somebody going to left turn across all of those lanes of travel, but particularly with, with some of the traffic issues we've had there, we're hoping that will alleviate some of the issues as well.
Wasn't there discussion at some point about having a, the driveway reconstructed so that it would be impossible to turn left? Might be a little more commanding than a sign that says no left turn?
Yeah, they're, they've got plans, they have to get a permit from PennDOT before they can do that, and as far as I know, they're still working with PennDOT to get that done. Um, yeah, I go by there, I can't say every day, but usually probably three or four times a week, and it's really hit or miss whether there's a line there, and I could say, probably about halftime I go by, I see somebody out there directing traffic, sometimes it's Bruce himself. I can't say, I've seen somebody there consistently. We can go back and touch base with them again, and just, you know, reinforce that, he needs, he should really have somebody out there helping. The problem is, they help, they start helping to the point where they're, at some point, they start stopping traffic on, on Atherton, and we have to go out and retrain them, that they can't do that.
Yeah, and, you know, we have received, I can tell you, in the month of August, if you look through the traffic calls, I think a handful of them are from traffic.
Yeah, I don't, we haven't had any crashes, have we?
We haven't had any crashes yet, no.
Um, we, we know it's an issue, I monitor it, Chief's monitor it. Like I said, it's not like it's every day at 12:30 there's an issue, so, we, you know, but we, we keep an eye on it, and like I said, why don't we touch base with Bruce again and see, you know, think, let's all think a little harder.
Thank you.
Yeah, it certainly does, it certainly does seem like they are trying, I'm impressed with that all along.
Yep, I would agree with that.
I have a couple of details, one GOA in the report.
I should, maybe print out the list again, garn on arrival.
Garn on arrival, okay, I just, I read that, every now and then I pick up a new turn, that's fine.
Yep.
So I noticed that you had a 302 warrant?
Yes.
And could you kind of describe as professionally as possible how that went? I mean, it's certainly an issue that was discussed recently in this community.
Sure, certainly, yeah, I mean, there, there was no, no issues, it was somebody who, a warrant was, was issued for them to be taken up to the hospital, to be evaluated, and there was, there was absolutely no issue whatsoever, so.
Great, great, yeah, it jumped out at me. The, also, I noticed that there were a number of calls for masks at, not being worn at establishments, how did that go?
So we had, I believe we had nine in the month of August, I think is, is the right number. Three of those were employees not wearing masks.
In where?
Employees that were not wearing masks.
Oh, gotcha, oh, okay.
So we, we have addressed with the businesses that, you know, to make sure that they understand with the governor's order, and also with the ordinance now that we have. The other ones generally were not reaching the criteria of us to take enforcement action. So with the 25 insider residents, we were finding that, you know, we would get there and maybe there'd be five or six people gathered, or whatever the case may be. So, nothing that we've taken any kind of enforcement action on, but even still, we still make sure that we educate anytime we can get the opportunity to do so.
Okay, great, thank you, that's, that's good to hear. Um, yeah.
So we're talking about masks, I noticed postings on the Facebook page, I forgot the name of it, about masking. Someone reported that they were shopping in Wegmans, and then three, three females came in without masks, and the shopper told one of the employees, employee called the manager, the shopper saw the manager talking with the three women, and later saw the three women shopping without masks, so apparently the, nothing happened, or the, the three women refused to comply. I, I suggested, since we now have an ordinance, that shopper can call 911. Is that the appropriate avenue that a shopper can use to report on a non-compliant? Is that the appropriate avenue that a shopper can use to report on a non-compliant mask where inside a business?
Certainly they can, and we'll respond anytime, and we're there to obviously de-escalate a situation. You know, we've had, you know, sometimes we've been hearing about, obviously nationwide, people getting into arguments or physical altercations over this. So by all means, the police will come and we'll address that. It's appropriate to deal with the store manager or the store employees as well if they're willing to help.
Well, you know, a couple of responses to that. One person said that they would not call 911. It's not an emergency.
Right.
They would not call 911. And the, another poster said, well, call the non-emergency line.
Correct.
Is that also an appropriate avenue?
You're stealing my phone. That's what I was just going to say. Yeah, you don't necessarily have to call 911. 911 is an emergency line, and we prefer that to be left for true emergencies. So by all means, they can call 1-800-479-0050, which is the non-emergency line that rings right into the 911 center, and they will dispatch an officer just like they would if you called in on the 911.
Oh, goes into the 911 center.
Yep.
It doesn't go directly to the county.
It does not. It still goes to Bell, it still goes to Bell phone, and then they dispatch an officer via radio from there. So, yep.
Well, it might make someone feel better to know that they're not calling the emergency number, 911, if they had an alternate number.
Certainly, yep.
So I might add, if there happens to be anyone sitting on our board who is in charge of a Facebook site that deals with masking, that person might find a way to post the non-emergency number on Facebook and spread it around through social media. I, for example, have it in my phone.
Yeah, it's, I think the site that was being referred to is called Mask Strong.
Right. But you could also put it in yours.
And I know Joyce, who's the administrator of that, and I check on that. You know, I could do a posting there.
Great.
And that number's good for the whole county also.
Yeah.
Correct.
It might be good. Great, thank you so much.
And so that was 1-800-479-0050.
That's correct.
It's on county.
Yeah, the Facebook site that I'm administrating is called Carrying Mask, and that's pictures of people wearing masks. It's a lighthearted site. Mask Strong is folks reporting on their experiences going into businesses and other places. So they're two separate sites, but I'll let Joyce know.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and yeah. Thank you for that, Chief. Thanks for all you do, as usual. Are we, is the chief going to, no, we're going to stay up there?
Yeah, he's going to stay there for the next one, too.
Oh, chief's going to stay up there, you're in the hot seat, so.
I'm going to.
So before we proceed into the two items on policy review, right, okay. I want to, I just want to state that the conversations that we have been having with the police chief and members of the force here at Patton Township over the last several months have been a part of a national conversation that has been ongoing for various reasons of abuse of police force in certain cases, and in particular, the Black Lives Concern This does not necessarily, this does not mean that we are picking apart our own police department because of transgressions that we are seeing, but we are holding them to the same standards that we expect everyone to, every community to require of their police department. And I want to commend the chief for his cooperation and openness, skills of communication. I sometimes think you have a degree in English. I communicate very well, thank you for that. And I want to especially thank you in your monthly report this month on a new category, the use of force. So I'm assuming that will be continued going forward. Thank you for that. And I think then at this point, we are looking at, yes, the acquisition of the federal surplus. We directed the staff to come up with a sample or a hard, a good solid draft of either a policy or an ordinance that directs how Patton Township is going to make use of the federal surplus program. So Doug, do you, do you probably, if you want to give an overview of that?
Yeah, I was the major author with Tyler's help on this, but let me run through where we're at. And there are some specific questions that we'd like input on from the board, and then we can have a more general discussion if needed, and then ask for direction. But the board directed us to look at a policy that had three sections, or essentially divided the potential equipment we might, or that's available into three categories. One was items that would not be permitted under any circumstances, and then items permitted with board approval, and items permitted without any board approval. So can you put the draft resolution up, Alexander? So you see in the draft section there, in the box, in the text box there, and this covers, is intended to cover the gamut of programs that the federal government has today and may have in the future. And we did reference the 1033 program, but just any program that involves surplus equipment from the United States government is covered. And then under item number one, items not permitted to be acquired, lethal weapons, A, lethal weapons, and B, vehicles that should be characterized as offensive or aggressive. You know, and then try to characterize that vehicles that would be deployed with attacking forces. And section two then covers those items that would be permitted on request of the police chief and with board approval, and broken down into four subsections. Any vehicles not included in 1B, which is the aggressive or the offensive vehicles. Item B, we'll have some more discussion about less than lethal weapons. And we can get some more explanation on that from the chief if need be. C, personal protection equipment for officers. In this case, we're talking about things like ballistic shields, ballistic vests, helmets, not stuff to protect you from COVID, but the stuff to protect you from stuff that's extremely dangerous. And then D is kind of a catch-all, if it's not included in section one or section three, then it could be requested. Section three under the draft policy then includes those things that could be acquired without board approval, typically things that are more mundane, let's say. But to include, A, office equipment supplies, B, computer equipment, and other electronic technology that supports communications and record-keeping functions. C, equipment that has no offensive capabilities and already utilized by departments, such as those things listed, binoculars, thermal sensors, night vision equipment, rangefinder equipment. D is then added in as kind of a catch, well, and the board can give me direction. Those things that we forgot to list somewhere in section three, but when it came up, everyone said, oh, yeah, this doesn't need a whole lot of discussion. So this would provide a process where the chair, board chair, the board vice chair, the police chief, township manager, if we can all agree on something, then it wouldn't have to go to the board of supervisors. And again, if there's not unanimous agreement, all four of those people, then it would have to go back into section two. Sections four, five, and six then are procedural type of things. There are a couple of questions under four that have to do with going to the board for approval, the things, the items under section two. 4B specifically, if the board does review one of those requests, and I'd ask the board to provide input on how many votes it would require to approve that. It could be a majority, which is three votes, supermajority, four, or unanimous, would be five votes at the board. And then under C, just so, not that expect Tyler to do it, but if a request is denied, there's some timeframe where the board will not consider it, a quest, another request similar in nature. And again, there's a selection of options for the board to consider. And with that, I'll ask if there's any questions.
Thank you. I thought that was very thorough. Any questions from board members at this point? I have a couple of questions. And, oh, Anita, sure. Yes.
When we're looking at 2B on the less than lethal weapons, such as beanbag munitions, I'd appreciate a sense from the chief. As I did just limited research on beanbag munitions, the sources I saw said they can severely injure or even kill. And is beanbag munition something, chief, that is important for your variety of options that you might need in certain situations?
Yes, certainly. We actually carry them currently in our vehicles. All the vehicles do have them. And there's definitely a time and a place where they could be deployed. We, the officers receive extensive training on those because of the potential of serious injury. If they are deployed, so parts of the body to any man and things like that are discussed in the training. And they also fire them every year for accuracy and familiarization with the weapon. But there also is other tactical considerations. They could be used, for instance, to shoot out a porch light or something like that so that we don't illuminate ourselves if we're going for some type of serious, serious call. So there's many different uses for them, but we do currently have them, yes.
Thank you.
And I suppose you also have in your inventory already, the pepper spray and expandable batons, those are standard items.
That's correct, yes.
So you purchase those routinely.
Correct.
You don't have to rely on surplus, government surplus, to purchase them.
That's correct, no. And for instance, the OC or the Oreo resin capsicum pepper spray has a shelf life. Those do expire, so I'd be clearly about getting it from a government agency with, you know, maybe six months left on it, and I think that'd be worth a lot.
I wanted to just also state, I don't know whether we need to state it in the ordinance or, what's the other option?
Resolution.
Or resolution, yeah, thanks. That the overarching need or that we want to meet is to prevent what is commonly called the militarization of police, which I'm assuming there's been considerable research on the impact that this has on civil unrest. I certainly have read quite a bit about it. So that is what's driving this. And also recognizing that it's, it is somewhat subjective, and recognizing the responsibility of the board and carrying that out. And I'd also like to recognize that, yes, this is adding another layer of regulations, but it is also offering an opportunity to participate in a cost-effective program. So I want to thank the manager, I'm assuming Chief Jolly might have had some info for this. That allows us to both achieve our desire to have an un-militarized force, which I really don't fear that we are going to have, but we're making sure of that, and to have some financial practicality. And Doug, I think, were you going to say something? Or?
Can I understand, you were addressing whether this should be a resolution or an ordinance?
Well, that actually comes, yeah.
Oh, you weren't talking about that specifically at this point?
No, I was just referencing the fact that that actually is how we will conclude this discussion. Or it's one item in our discussion. We're looking forward to that. So I didn't know quite what to call this document, that's all.
We may also have a citizen comment.
Absolutely, and I referenced that. And I just, I actually had a question on the timeliness of an order. We're getting into the fine details here under section four, or for items that are submitted that need the written request from the board. What is the kind of turnaround time of that? At least, you probably don't know if there's a chance that we would lose a coveted practical item in there.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I don't have any answers for that, I'm not sure.
It just struck me. Okay. So, yes, thank you for that. Any other comments from the board or from staff?
Yeah. Madam Chair, yes.
Thank you.
As I understand it, yeah, the township manager had asked us whether section 2B, which is the less than lethal weapons, should it remain in that section, or should it be moved to section one, which is prohibited? And so I just, my question on the beanbag munitions was, though they're called less than lethal weapons, indeed, they can be lethal. It was a definition question. And the manager has asked whether it should stay there in terms of being approved by the board, should the police chief require it, or should it be moved to section one, which is not permitted at all? And I think that's something the board should decide before it goes to a public hearing.
Sure. And of course, that would not, will, prevent them from purchasing it through another source so they use that. So our intention here is not to, with this document, is not to say what they can and cannot purchase per se, but what they can and cannot purchase through any federal surplus. But it is a point well made, and we could simply, very simply, address that by striking that.
Well, I would say, since our police force already purchases these items in their inventory, I don't see why we would put them in the not permitted category. They should, I would say, keep them in under section two.
Right. Mr. Abrams?
I agree with that. I think that, you know, if there was a history of a problem that we had to solve, then, you know, it all takes us one incident for problems to prop up, but you never know that that's going to happen. But in the absence of that, I don't see putting a lot of restrictions on, because I think it can affect morale and, look at that, too.
And I would argue, certainly, perhaps not in this document, and if at some point down the road, or even if it's next month, the board should take great alarm at a weapon that is being used, then we address that, but we don't address it in the federal surplus program. So that's just my thinking, that it was a point well raised. Yes, Ms. James?
I agree with that on number 2C, the equipment used for personal protection. And the township manager had asked whether that should maybe go to the permitted section. It seems to me, personal protection is very important, and I would favor moving that to the permitted section.
Well, the one hesitation that I would have on that is that there is some personal protection equipment that can actually look quite militarized. So I think that was the intent there. And again, I reference the subjectiveness of this. Yes, Ms. Rob?
Well, chief had explained to the board the importance of the beanbag weapon and shooting out lights to protect them as they're moving forward. I would say, you know, chief has already explained it, it is needed. So I would leave it in the section that it stated that this particular item is a needed equipment for protection.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And I see Mr. Abrams?
No, no, I agree.
Oh.
Yeah, I agree, too.
Oh, great, okay.
So I would say we can move that down to section three.
What, down to section three? Which one?
The personal protection equipment. Does it, I don't see why we don't board permission
Okay.
To, to purchase that. That ought to be under section.
Do we see any Darth Vader outfits on the street? And we'll have another discussion. And I think that was the reference. I'm fine with that, also. But at this point, I want to invite comments from the public, if there are any, on this particular section. Thank you, chief. Yes.
Ben Jones, a resident here. I looked at the resolution or ordinance, and it looked like it was very well thought out. So thank you to Mr. Doug for drafting that and also the chief's input into it. The only question I had, which it seemed like you were going to address it later, is the difference between a resolution and ordinance and what, you know, whether it's worth it being an ordinance rather than a resolution. So that's, but you're going to have that discussion, but.
Why don't you share your thoughts on that while you're up?
Well, I, I.
If that's appropriate, yeah.
I mean, I'll, I'll probably learn from the discussion, too, in terms of the differences in terms of, which, because I saw at the bottom that it's sort of in place unless action is taken by the board to overturn it, but just sort of like the legal niceties, the difference between those would be helpful. But I, I just, I wanted to thank the board and everyone for taking these steps forward and having a draft, and really appreciate it, and I think definitely builds trust with the police and the community. So, so thank you for your steps on this.
And thank you for your input
Yes.
along in the process. So I would like to move to the question of resolution versus ordinance.
There were two more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Items.
Thank you.
That highlighted 3D.
Oh, yes.
And 4B and C.
Do you have any questions on those? I didn't have any. Does anybody have any questions on?
No, I, I think 3D is fine to be left.
Oh, right, you're right. And 4C.
Now, 4B and C, we are asked to decide on, on board approval, whether a majority is sufficient or more than the majority needs to be voted to make, to approve a purchase. And then the C says resubmission of a denied request. How long before we'll consider a resubmission of a denied request? So my, I'll go ahead and say for 4B, to me, a majority, well, all our decisions are based on majority vote already, so I don't see a need to change that.
I concur. Anyone have a different opinion? With such an agreeable lot, mostly. Thank you.
There's no reason not to agree.
And Dan, you wanted to go on to the 4C?
4C, resubmission of a denied request.
Twelve months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my.
A year, have to wait a year.
Yeah. Any other numbers thrown out there? Yes, Elliot?
I think context, I mean, suppose we make some decision that turns out is misguided and we didn't realize it, are we restricting ourselves? I.
Well, the board can bring it back up.
Yeah.
If the board wanted to, it's just the police chief couldn't resubmit it within a year.
Oh, we're all even.
If the board wanted to do something, they, they have that.
There's, to me, there's nothing magical about a year. I mean, it could be eight months, it could be a one month, it could be any number.
The only thing about 24 months is that potential, there'll be somebody different on the board.
For sure.
In 24 months.
Right.
Because there'll be an election in sometime in that year.
Probably rounding campaign over that issue. It's, it's likely.
But if everybody's okay with 12, then I, you know, that's, I put that in there for the future.
Sure.
I don't, I believe Tyler can read the, read the tea leaves pretty good. If he brought something in and it was a 5-0, no, you can't have it. I don't think he's going to bring, he's going to bring it back at any time soon.
And like most laws or ordinances, they're not written for the 95% of us.
So, you know, the last question then is resolution or ordinance? And it's primarily, what is the process to change one of those? If it's a resolution, you'd have to approve another resolution. If it's an ordinance, you'd have to approve another ordinance. And an ordinance has a slight, well, under Pennsylvania law, you know, we have, you have to advertise it once in the legal ad. So the advertising requirements aren't huge, but there are some more, there are more notice provisions on an ordinance than there are on a resolution. In, in, in simple terms, it's harder to change an ordinance than it is a resolution.
So anybody want to jump in? One way or the other?
I think a resolution is fine.
And I, and I was, oh, Betsy, please, yes.
Yeah, I, I would have, I think that is fine, too, in part because this is really a policy thing. I mean, this is not something that's going to govern the residents of the township, it's going to govern, it's an internal policy that you're using. So I think a resolution is fine. You have it clearly set up in there how it must be changed, which requires another action of the board. So once you pass this as a resolution, it's, it's in place.
So I was actually going to propose an ordinance for the simple fact that it sets up to have community response, potentially. We're making it easier for community response. And I think I'm, I'm looking at this process as, of reviewing police policies in general, as going across, across the nation, as setting a precedence or perhaps changing a culture where policing becomes a transactional process to a certain extent between community and the policing agency. Not that it's, it's a tug-of-war or anything adversarial, but that it's then seen as a cooperative effort. It's also inherently transparent, but then so is a resolution. So from my perspective, I, I prefer the ordinance.
Betsy, if I could just jump in here.
Please.
I, I think, I, I think what you're thinking of is that because an ordinance requires, under the municipalities code, advertising, that that gives it a heightened awareness to the public. I mean, your agendas are public, your meetings are public, you know, there's a lot of that that will get out anyways. There is nothing that precludes the board from advertising that you are considering a resolution. It's just simply that the municipalities plan code does not require you to. So if, if what makes a difference for you is the fact that the public gets notice, that could be something that you do in choosing to enact this as a resolution. But you're not required to, that's my point.
Okay. And I'm certainly fine with that. Is there some way that we can make it a resolution with an asterisk?
No.
Can you put it as?
Well, I mean.
Whatever.
Well, I guess you'd have to add some stipulations for public notice. If you, if you want to, you know, you could say, under item six, policy may only be changed by a resolution, and then you'd have to set out some specific criteria about how that notice would be conveyed to the public.
You know, I'm actually going to.
I have a question.
Yes.
For the solicitor, because you give us good advice here. Does an ordinance just seem to carry more weight in the public mind?
Well, I, I can't, I, I guess I can't speak for the public. I mean, this has always been an issue of, a challenge for government, municipal governments, because of course, we have statutes, and, and to some extent, even our legislature struggles with this kind of question about how you handle something that is really an internal policy, right? It, it's kind of like approving an employee handbook and things of that nature that, you know, and I don't mean to digress, but it really is an internal policy. I don't know that the public will see it one way or the other. I'm sure there are members who would, but I think there are just as many members who will note that it has passed and, and, and recognize it and move on. For the average citizen of Patton Township, this will not have, while it may be important to them that it happened and that, that you are setting up standards, it's not going to affect their day-to-day lives. This is not like the mask ordinance that affects how they go out and do their business or your noise ordinance we're going to talk about. This is really something that's internal to you, and that's why in, in the corporate structure, in the business structure, it's more really a resolution as opposed to a ordinance.
So I, I, oh, yes.
There's no reason to have a resolutionary war about this.
Resolutionary war. Okay. So we're having a resol, not having a resolutionary, and I was going to throw a lifeline out to, to Ben Jones. To get your, I would love to get your sense of this.
I just had a quick question for Doug. So you mentioned that, like, it's easier to overturn a resolution than overturning an ordinance? Because I like this one, to overturn it, you'd have to get the board together and vote. For an ordinance, you'd have to, there'd be a, a public.
Well, the, the, the public advertising requirement, at the bare minimum, is to put a legal ad in the CDT at least seven days in advance. So that would be a very small print ad on the last page of the CDT that most people don't read. Which was why I said if you wanted to do something with, I mean, if you wanted to do, as Betsy said, a resolution asterisk, you'd have to lay out the specific notice requirements you'd want the staff to do, to notify the public.
But is that the, is that the difference? Is that notice required?
Yeah. In, in terms of notice, that's the difference. In terms of impact, if the board passed an ordinance, they can tell you, you have to wear a mask, and if you don't wear a mask, we'll, we'll fine you $100, and you have to pay the $100 or go to jail. In this case, if the police chief bought something under section one, then the board and the manager, because the, the manager would say, Mr. Police Chief, you're terminated because you violated a policy of the township. So we're not going to fine him, we're just going to terminate him. Might be some other, you know, that, that would be the most severe discipline, but that could happen under, that's, that's the effect that this would have as a resolution. And when Betsy said, Betsy, the solicitor, said it's internal, all the impacts are going to be internal. There's no external impact. We're not telling somebody else outside of the Patton Township organization what they can or cannot do.
Okay.
So in terms of if there are any sanctions, if there are internal sanctions versus?
Yeah, I guess, like I said, an ordinance is slightly harder to change or repeal, you know, and it's going to all be with those five people that sit there on the board.
And in, in both cases, we, we would entertain comments from the public.
Correct.
But the public would not have the deciding factor, they would have influential factor in either case of that.
And I'm sure.
Okay. I like Betsy Dupuis' distinction. Yes, Anita, please. Yeah.
If it's six of one, half dozen of another, I think I would tend toward the ordinance. I agree, it was very insightful, our solicitor mentioning how it is an internal policy, that this particular internal policy has a big impact on the public, which is why we're considering it in the first place. So if I was, you know, I'm fine with either, but I think I would lean towards the ordinance because of the fact, I think there is public interest in this particular internal policy.
Shall we call for a vote? I, I think.
There's not been a motion.
Well, I know, but is a, oh, I guess we just haven't motioned either. Yes, Pam Robb, yes.
I have a question for Betsy, the solicitor. Isn't an ordinance more of a permanent record than the resolution?
No, a resolution, the township maintains, as any municipality and actually every corporation should in this Commonwealth, maintains a book of resolutions. That's why they're numbered and set out, and they are, I mean, there are many decisions that we go back and find that this board has made or other boards have made that were actually by resolution. It's really a function of the purpose of what you are trying to accomplish. And, and so, you know, I don't, I don't see this, I mean, there are other municipalities across the Commonwealth that have a similar policy that is not even embodied into a resolution or an ordinance. It is an internal policy. It's like, it would, it would be the same as making your employee handbook an ordinance, which we just wouldn't do. So, you know, that's kind of the distinction. I understand the need for public knowledge about it, but I, I think, you know, what's interesting to me is that you get a lot more public knowledge of what you do in Patton Township simply because you have meetings on CNET that get replayed than, than the majority of our municipalities across the Commonwealth. So you have a lot of citizens who know what you do, can check in and out of this meeting as they choose to on CNET Live in ways that other people don't. So anyways.
Dan, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, my observation from this discussion is that the desire for an ordinance seems more symbolic than it is actual practicality. It's not, because it's an internal policy we're talking about, it doesn't matter. But it seems for a couple of supervisors, the symbolic meaning of an ordinance, it seems to enhance the policy versus having it as a resolution. So is that?
But I'd like to also state, I want you to respond to that, and then I'll get to Elliot. Yes, we do, I guess, have a book of resolutions, but I would say that it, right now, is very difficult to access that. Am I right or am I left on that? I don't think we have it on the website.
They're not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whereas.
I mean, the public can say, do you have a resolution on X, Y, and Z? We can find it and give it to them.
Yeah.
You know, you're probably right, we need, we probably should put all those things on the website that haven't been done yet, but we.
Right.
But we could. I mean, as Ms. Dupuis said, you know, we keep all the ordinances and we keep all the resolutions.
Right. And there is, I'll get to Elliot, certainly the ordinance, ordinances connected with zoning, that is, there's a system that is pretty much universally adopted, that is very easy to research by the public? Is that for?
Well, we have a code book.
A code book, right.
Remember, typically, our ordinances, any, our ordinances generally amend our code book. So.
Interesting, okay.
You've seen the big brown book.
Well, and also.
And it's also, that's on our website, as Alexander put it up, so.
And it's also very easy to search.
Oh, no, it's very easy to search.
So what I'm getting at is, is the accessibility of this information?
Well, that is on the website.
Right.
So any co, any ordinance that we have passed that amends this document is now part of this document. So the ordinance, anytime we make a zoning change, that gets reflected in this document, gets reflected in the zoning map, too. But anytime we change the language in the zoning ordinance, if we add a use to the planned airport district, that gets put into that document.
That's one, I love it.
So everything, all, so there, there's a few ordinances that we do, like for borrowing and things like that, don't affect this document, don't affect the code, but they're required by the state law for us to undertake certain things, primarily borrowing.
Is there an analogous compilation of ordinances that are not?
Are res, no.
That are not related to?
No.
So whether it was ordinance or resolution, it would be just.
But I mean, anything that affects people that, that permits them to do something or prohibits them from doing something in Patton Township.
Yeah.
A resident, a visitor, a business that we have authority over is in the Code of Patton Township, this book.
Oh.
So if you want to know about noise, you wouldn't go look in our ordinances, you'd go to the Code of Patton Township, put in, type in noise, and you'd come up with chapter 105.
Okay.
And it would tell you. And it would tell you what you can and can't do in Patton Township in terms of noise.
Okay, so my question is that if this were an ordinance on the acquisition of, it would not be...
It's not going to, it's not going to end up in there. I mean, I would say if you, if the policy was going to be, were not going to obtain, acquire anything under a federal surplus program, that might be, that might be an ordinance you want to put in there. Because, and that might still be a policy statement, but, you know, here, we're really crafting a detail of how are we going to manage how the police department may acquire stuff out of a certain program, and now that we've categorized it in three different sections, it really is an internal policy. And as I said, the only impact of it is somebody, if an employee violates the policy, they're going to get disciplined under our progressive discipline system. You know, they're not going to be fined, they're not going to be put in jail, but they're going to be warned, suspended, or terminated, or something like that.
And I will say, just to finish the conversation with Dan, my concern is the permanence. But by saying that, I'm also withholding my trust of future generations, or questioning my trust.
Yeah, institutional knowledge is something that we're always trying to push and push forward. This would be one of those things that would hopefully carry over from manager to manager and police chief to police chief.
And hopefully, it will become part of the culture.
Yes. Oh, it'd definitely be part of the culture, because it's required for employee behavior.
Yeah, great, so, I know Elliot was next.
I just wanted to offer some sage advice. Here's the sage, that I think we're spending an inordinate amount of time trying to come to a resolution on this. But either way, it's going to be permanently recorded.
There you go. Well, I was going to make a, an observation about myself spending an inordinate amount of time and express my gratitude for people letting me indulge in that, but I think it's an important process, I think it's an important conversation to have, and I know you think so too, despite the pun. So, I will actually make my recommendation then to have this stand as a resolution.
Second.
And...
Oh, you've changed.
I have changed, I have been convinced.
Okay, well, that's fine with me.
Okay. But I, we have two more people to hear from, and I am fine. Anita and Pam, do you have an opinion on ordinance or resolution? Anita, you have stated ordinance.
Yeah, my sense is that, and again, as I like how Supervisor Trevino said, that, you know, maybe it's, the ordinance is a symbolic enhancement. I think we're trying to reach multiple purposes, and one is kind of the covenant with the residents. What can the residents expect from the police? And in that sense, I still support the ordinance, but, you know, I don't want to be a divisive voice here. I'll obviously support what the majority supports.
Holding your own never makes you divisive. I'll say that to anyone. And Ms. Robb, do you want to weigh in? Ordinance or resolution?
I've been thinking on the resolution with, because it can be seen, and that the board has the decision to make changes. So, I can, I can go with, at first, I was going to do the ordinance, but I can go with the resolution after the explanation from the solicitor and from Doug. My decision is with the board.
Okay, great, so it sounds like the will of the board is agreeably to suggest that this be, or request that this be set up as a resolution, and I think we also have a question on the timing of this, considering that, so it looks like we obviously won't be voting on the final draft today, so we will charge the...
Yeah, we can bring this back on the 23rd then.
Mm-hmm. Great. I am very cognizant of our timeline, and not just for the meeting tonight, but for these policies, to persist and not have them get lost, but I also understand the importance of not rushing through any, they're very serious, so...
Yeah, we have two others that we're working on gathering information on.
And I was going to ask you about that, yeah, okay. Perfect, so, let's see, I've kind of lost, oh, and the second item under, oh, oh, thank you!
Just preparing for the next item, sorry.
Oh, my God, don't interrupt. You, you, yes, thank you. So, Chief, I'll stop talking.
Okay, so during our work sessions over the summer, I believe it was our last one, Mr. Jones actually had made mention to inquiring about some information about the Center County Tactical Response Team. And so I prepared a document that has a little bit of the history, the oversight, some things about the tactical command, and some of the deployments, and the equipment used, things like that. This is actually a topic I hold near and dear to my heart. I was on the team for 11 years.
Wow.
Actually, left the team, I got promoted to Chief of Police, conflict there, and so here I am now, and I was on the team from 2006 until I left 2017, so, so, pretty good, I guess I almost could summarize all the next area in this topic, so. But just real quickly, a little briefly, a little history, the tactical response team, or as it's referred to as TRT, was formed in 1994. All Center County Municipal Departments, so that's Bellefontaine Springs, Patton Ferguson, Penn State, and State College, all have representation on the team, and all still continue to participate on the team. The oversight, the tactical response team is governed by the Center County Chiefs of Police of those participating departments. The Board of Chiefs has complete authority over the team. Anytime there's any type of decision-making to be made in reference to TRT, for instance, a new officer coming onto the team, or things like that, that decision is brought before the Board of Chiefs for discussion, deliberation, and then also for approval. Tactical command, so anytime we go to a incident where a critical incident is occurring, the host jurisdiction, again, which would be just the location where this, that serious incident is occurring, will designate an incident commander. Generally, that is the Chief of Police, or their designee. The incident commander has full authority over their tactical response team during all deployments, so they are the final decision-maker on what action the team is going to be allowed to perform to come to a successful, peaceful resolution to the incident they're on. But the tactical response team leader reports directly to the incident commander, and then they provide direct supervision to the tactical response team field operators. Just so you know, right now, the tactical response team leader is Detective Snyder of our agency. He's in charge of the tactical response team. Deployments, and this number looks a little deceiving right out of the gate, but they had 114 deployments. I researched back four years, but part of the reason why that number is so high, 62 of those were possession with intent to deliver narcotics warrants where at least two, two team members were present. So it wasn't a full team call-out. The full team consists of 14 tactical response team operators, and then they have containment team support as well. But 14 would be considered a full call-out, and they also have medical support from Center Life, like they have tactical EMS that is attached to them as well. But one of the biggest things that they do is they provide overwatch for Penn State football. If you've been to a football game, you'll see them standing up on the roof, so they do have overwatch on the roof, looking for generally terrorists or any kind of suspicious activity. If you have a large gathering, that's a very vulnerable target, so we, they are up there to really monitor, looking for anything suspicious or out of place. But they integrate then with the bomb squad, and also other tactical response team members who are on the ground to respond to incidents that maybe the officer was up on top seat, so they help sort of direct them. So over the last four years, they provided overwatch at 32 Penn State home football games, and then also Blake Shelton, I believe it was, came and provided, did a concert at Beaver Stadium, so they were there for that as well. They were part of three contingency planning activations, preparing for large football games where we knew there could be some civil unrest after, if, depending on the results of the game, and a couple of times they actually were deployed as part of the mobile field force that goes out to clear the streets downtown if there's any kind of problems after a football game. But they were part of the planning, and then also deployment, who were, I believe after Ohio State was one of the big ones, so, yeah, definitely, they were part of that as well. So that brings us down to really kind of the localized activations, 16 over the past four years, so I don't believe those were all, I think the last year there was none, so those are kind of spread out through those four years. But some of the different types of calls that they went on were barricade, barricaded gunmen, assisted the bomb squad, did wooded terrain and search and tracking. There's multiple bomb threats after one incident on campus, and then also in business here in Patton Township that they responded to. A robbery, suicide attempt with a gun, and then they also provided overwatch for the Martin Luther King Plaza dedication a few years ago. Some of the equipment, really, generally, they have what the normal patrol officers have. There is an exception, they are trained on a tactical precision weapon. They also have some other non-lethal options that we don't have necessarily right here at our agency, it's like 40 millimeter launchers, things like that. So they do have some other non-lethal options, but the only other weapon really that they, again, that they have access to is one, the tactical precision weapon that they specialize in. All the weapons that the tactical operators have are owned by, for our agency, are owned by Patton Township, so we don't have anything that they use that's from like a 1033 or any kind of government program. They do have special ballistic vests, they have arm and groin protection. When they get called in, it's because something dangerous has happened. So the patrol officers are there, a lot of times they'll form a very good perimeter on a location to make sure that the incident's contained, and then you don't have to worry about the suspect fleeing, and then get to chase them, and not know where they're at. So their really, their responsibility is to contain it, and then we call in the specialized officers who have the training for the entry for, you know, marksmanship, things like that. But they do, again, they have ballistic vests with arm and groin protection. These vests have very thick Level 4 plates that are rated to stop a rifle round. Our patrol officers do not wear those, they're generally just wearing the ballistic vests. But they also have ballistic helmets, and again, most of that gear is available to patrol officers as far as ballistic helmets, ballistic shields, things like that, that we have in the trucks of our cars. We do have access to the Bearcat. All police agencies in Center County, quite frankly, the eight county region have access to our, to the Bearcat. I hate that word, I think that's a terrible describer of the word. It's a rescue vehicle, it's an armored rescue vehicle. So if an officer would happen to be under fire, it's a way for us to put a barrier between them and whoever is trying to harm them, and for us to be able to go up and rescue that officer, citizen, anybody who may be. So we consider it an armored rescue vehicle, not a Bearcat. But that vehicle was purchased with funds from the South Central Mountains Regional Task Force, and again, that task force provides services to citizens of the eight county region, basically the whole central part of Pennsylvania.
They're funded through DHS, Department of Homeland Security, the task force.
Yep. And the vehicle's stored currently and insured, maintained in Lowen Township in Lowen Township. In fact, they actually just called, because we had rescheduled the safety fair, and I neglected to let them know that it was canceled for next weekend, obviously, but we had planned to have it come up. It's always one of the showpieces that we have at the safety fair, that a lot of people enjoy checking it out, and so it's, Lowen Township called the other night last week and said, "Hey, you still need that next week?" And we said, "No, next year, we'll have it up next year." Then we have a couple photos of the Bearcat. So that's not the interior of ours, however, it's pretty much an identical replica. I couldn't find any photos that I had specifically of ours, but that's exactly what ours looks like on the inside, and then obviously there it is on display at the safety fair. You can actually see a corner here, under the tent, that's somebody here, that the officers have, the back shield is actually, the others are patrol vehicles on the table, and obviously it's laying down, but that's the Level 4 vest that the officers have. And that's just a real quick overview of our tactical response team. I don't know what other information or other questions you have, I'd be happy to help answer any if I can.
No questions for me, Pam, yes. Pam Rock.
Was the TRT team at the Black Lives Matter rally downtown, do you know?
They have not been deployed to that now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any, any questions, any more questions? I feel, yeah, I've learned quite a lot in this, I appreciate the effort.
Certainly.
See if Mr. Jones has any questions.
Oh, Mr. Jones, any questions, comments? Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Chief Jolly, for that information, very helpful. I just had one, like, for the drug cases that the team gets deployed to, what's sort of the decision process on like whether or not to deploy the team? And I know you said it's on like a couple of members, but like, what's the decision process, like, okay, we're going to deploy for this particular drug case, but we're not deploying for that?
So, to answer that, deployments is kind of a deceiving way to describe that. So all of our tactical response team members are on the Center County Drug Task Force as well. So generally, they're used to do any undercover buys and units and things like that. So generally, it's just because of the availability. One of the lead detectives, who does a lot of drug enforcement in our area, is a member of the team, so you're a member, generally, he's on all of our activities. So typically, we've had at least one other person who's on the team, but it's not a call-out, they're not calling for team members to come, it's just that generally, when they set up, you know, we need three or four officers to go over this, generally, they get to the, they're team members. So, does that make sense? Yeah?
These are arrest warrants?
Those are, yeah, so basically...
Not search warrants?
Yeah, could be either way, could be search warrant or arrest warrant. Generally, these are probably search warrants.
Thank you. Again, and we will continue to address other issues such as no-knock warrants, use of forced de-escalation, diversity training through hiring, diversity training, so on, which we've discussed before and may wish to take action on.
Yeah, Chief and I are working on gathering information on search warrant issues and use of deadly force.
Great, thank you very much. Again, I think we can move on to the third item under public safety, and that would be the noise regulation. And this came about when I think there was a question of noise being generated from some children playing outside. This, this amendment allows for the use of discretion of enforcement, allows some flexibility in the ordinance. Doug, you want to take it from...
We'd also, based on comments we received at the last meeting, also change the deadline, or the, the stop time for fireworks from 11:00 PM to 10:00 PM, except on July 4th, where they can be discharged until 11:00 PM. There's also a continuing exception for New Year's Eve, from 11:45 to 12:15, so, if the board has any more questions, we can try to answer those, and if you'd like, and are comfortable with the draft, as provided, we can get that advertised for potential action on the 23rd.
Yeah, so let's, let's check in with board members, do you have any concerns or questions about the amended ordinance? I do not, I would actually like to hear a motion?
Removed.
To put it on the 23rd, and maybe a second to that motion.
I'll say it.
Okay.
Yeah, we've got the two guys here, okay, thank you, multiple seconds.
And a vote?
Oh, and a vote, yes, thank you for that. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So we'll see it again on the 23rd, thank you very much. We do not have any items under Public Works, we do not have any items under Planning on Zoning, due to the Labor Day holiday, and they didn't meet. We do, however, have two items, three... the Labor Day holiday, and they didn't meet. We do, however, have two items, three items under administration. So the proposed liquor license transfer to the ReFarmed Cafe. And again, I'll let Doug take it from here.
Yeah, this is mostly informational at this point. And there's one, one decision point clear at the bottom of page eight. But we haven't done one of these for a while, so take the opportunity to educate the board members on state law and how it impacts us here. Pat Township, I, do we have someone from ReFarmed Cafe with us on Zoom? We were expecting, there's Mr. Duke.
Hey.
So Duke Gastiger is one of the owners of ReFarmed Cafe. But let me go through this process first, and then if Duke has any comments, we'll, we'll get some input from him. Under Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board has set of rules and regulations. Those, parts of those were provided to the board if they wanted to see the specifics of how those rules and regulations apply to Patton Township. People with liquor licenses are permitted to transfer those within counties. So from one municipality to another municipality within the county. In this case, the Gastigers are the former owners of the Rast Skeller Downtown and Spats Cafe. They had a liquor license there that they would like to bring out to Patton Township and apply to their ReFarmed Cafe out on Fillmore Road. Their attorney, Mr. Raymond, contacted me towards the end of August. We discussed this. I have tentatively scheduled this for a public hearing that's required on September 23rd. The liquor, the liquor code is written a little oddly. If you have to read the whole thing before you get to all the deadlines. Generally, it says we have to take action within 45 days of the request. But then if you read on all the way to the end, it says if you'd like, you can extend that 45 days by another 60 days if the municipality would like to. In this case, we could take that advantage, we could take advantage of that, but we would have to take action at least by the end of December 10th. The liquor code does not really provide a lot of criteria for the board to make this decision, but the board does have the opportunity to either say yes or no, approve or disapprove of the transfer. And that information then goes to the Liquor Control Board, who ultimately makes the decision. Typically, in Pennsylvania, I think as long as the municipality approves it, the Liquor Control Board generally approves it. With that, I don't know if we see if Mr. Gastiger has any comments he'd like to share. Duke?
Can you hear me? Am I off mute?
You're fine.
Okay. Thank you for considering this, this piece. When we began building and thinking about how we wanted to program ReFarmed Cafe, a liquor license was not part of the original programming. We opened the cafe in July last year, and since then, it's, it's been BYOB. We've absolutely had no problems whatsoever. When a guest has not brought their own wine, we have some house wine that we're able to offer them, which is allowed under PLCD in Pennsylvania. Honestly, this is a, this is a financial situation now, that with the COVID restrictions, revenue has been very, very tight. And whereas one time, last July, we were willing to give up, which sometimes represents 20 or 30% of the restaurant bill by people having to bring their own wine, we need that 20, 30% now for sale to stay, obviously to stay solid. So we have no bar on premises. We certainly would like to be able to serve wine by the bottle and by the glass. There is no other category for liquor sales. It's a full liquor license to be able to do that. Our liquor license for the Rast Skeller is in safekeeping now. And you may not be aware, but to keep it in safekeeping, which is basically keeping it in your drawer and not being used at a premise, you now have to pay a fee if you don't find a place for that license after two years. Our, our fee last year was $10,000. Our fee as of January 31st, 31st this year is $25,000. It is no longer feasible to keep that license in my drawer. We'll make good use of it here. We're, we're good neighbors, and it would not be ever abused.
Thank you. Any input from board members?
I have no problem with it at all.
I have no objection. And I think, any input from the public? I'm not seeing anybody in the audience, not seeing anybody calling in. So I think the next step is actually to consider a motion, a second to?
Let me check the phone. I forgot to move it over.
Oh, okay.
I haven't heard it ringing either, but.
Yeah. Whether we will hold that public hearing on September 23rd?
So moved.
On a second? Elliot has moved that a second?
I'll second.
And Dan has seconded it? Sorry, sorry, ladies. So it looks like we'll have that public hearing on the 23rd.
We're going to have to vote?
Oh, I'm off my game this morning, this, after this evening, whatever. So all those in favor of holding the public hearing on the 23rd, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So Duke will see you either in person or on the lively screen on the 23rd.
We'll be there either way, and we thank you very much for your consideration.
Duke, we, we will need your attorney here, too.
Yeah. He will be here. And I just want to tell you that I wish I could show you outside. Tonight is a picnic night at the cafe, and there are 50 people in blankets and deck chairs, having dinner outside, enjoying beautiful sunset and the beautiful town at Patton Township. So we appreciate you letting us be in part of your community.
Well, we like having you here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to board input for the 20?
Top of page.
I'm sorry? Oh, did I skip something? Wow, okay. That brings us to the coronavirus relief fund agreement with Center County. And I'm going to leave that totally to Doug.
The county commissioners has allocated a portion of funds to all the municipalities across the county. Our share of those funds is $150,245. The counties also provided us a copy of the draft agreement. I reviewed it. The solicitors reviewed it. And we need to approve this to be able to ask for those funds. We're trying to, we're working with the county to get some questions answered on what's permissible to get reimbursed. We don't have all the answers on that, but we're pretty sure we're going to be able to use all $150,000. So I'd ask that the board take action after they've discussed it and solicited public input to approve the agreement and also approve resolution 2020-019, which would authorize Ms. Whitman to sign on behalf of the board.
Okay. So we'll entertain comments from the board. I'm looking all around. I'm glad Larry Pagers on staff and Betsy DePuis on staff. It was a very complex and thorough document. Any, any comments? So that brings us to any public input? Probably not. And then I'm going to request a motion.
I so moved that we approve resolution 2020-019.
And I'm going to give one of the ladies a chance to second it.
Second, Pam Robb.
Okay. We got it. All right. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Great. And then we come to the board input for the capital improvement plan. Does anyone have anything to add? And I might add that I have something to add. And the intersection of Waddle Road and Toff Trees Avenue, it's a little bit confusing as you're going over Waddle Bridge and taking, right now, taking a right-hand turn onto Toff Trees Avenue. It's bothered me before. I did it recently this past weekend. It bothered me then. The bicycle lane kind of disappears. I think we've talked about it before because we had somebody present from the Center Region Bicycle Coalition or whatever that, their name is. So kind of looking at that, I mean, especially in regards to the bike lane, and looking, and also reexamining the bike lane and perhaps considering that bright green coating or adhesive material that was presented to us maybe a year, a couple of years ago, putting on that lane. And, yeah, so that's one item to add to that. I don't know if it's already on.
As part of the Toff Trees Corridor Project.
I was wondering about that. Okay.
Alexandra's been working with, a consultant. And we're going to, you're going to see that in two weeks.
Great. Okay.
So can you, can you wait till?
I can, absolutely. Well, this, of course, is for the next four years. So that intersection.
We'll have some nice colored drawings for you.
Okay, with green, but also consider that.
We haven't considered that, but it'd be a good point of discussion.
Okay, for the capital improvement. And then one last thing, which I thought just in discussing the open space property with the Penn State students, is looking for some funding or some support for any recommendations that they may have to do, public outreach, and maybe a little bit of improvement on the property, more signage or whatever they need.
We can look, look at that in concert with the budget when we look at that in November.
So it doesn't have to be on the CTE?
I mean, open space has its, its own little contained fund that has, you know, there, I haven't looked at it in terms of what we're going to do next year, but there may be some money that we can program towards things that they have, they want to do. So we'll look at that. I'll keep that in mind as I put that little budget together here in the next few weeks.
Any, any other suggestions for the capital improvement plan? And then the wish list? Let's see. Okay. Then we're going to go on to the consent agenda. And that is simply requesting a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I would request to pull.
Oh, oh, thank you, Dan.
Minutes of August 19th regular meeting from the consent agenda.
Okay.
As I suggesting.
So what's, thank you, Dan. I forgot about that. So we're going to pull.
I'll second it.
Pardon?
I'll second the motion that the manager's made.
And then do we address the consent agenda first, or do we address the minutes first? And then go back?
I would like to do it.
Okay. Let's just do the consent agenda. So we've got two items remaining on the consent agenda. One would be the, number two would be the August Bachelor Report. And third, or second item is to renew the leadership, support of the Leadership Center County.
I move approval of the consent agenda, modify the consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. I think I need to beat by a second.
Yeah.
And let's now take the minutes and.
We need to vote.
Oh, thank you very much. Those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So now we are going on to the minutes. And Dan, you want to just?
On the minutes, page, page 10, which is Administration, Item 7, Number F, Council of Governments Program Plan, a Capital Improvement Plan. The very last sentence on that page says, Ms. Whitman stated that she's okay with additional funds for the irrigation system. My recollection is that we also got assent or agreement to that statement by Ms. Tees and Ms. Robb.
Oh, good.
And is that correct, Anita and Pam? Did you both say it was, you were in favor of municipality, of Patton Township contributing towards, funds towards the irrigation system at Quahom Road Regional Park?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm suggesting that we add a second sentence that says, Ms. Tees, Ms. Robb also agreed. The reason is that I made it, I made a statement to the Finance Committee that this is a reversal of our prior board's position, which was that they had to fund everything with the existing, under the existing loan, whatever they wanted to do.
Okay. Good catch. I.
This, this just makes it clear that the majority of the board favored approval of that.
Motion to approve the amended.
So the, the motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll move that we approved the amended minutes.
Okay, Dan, whatever. I think Elliot made the motion, and Danny?
Oh, he already did?
Yeah, I think so. That's what my eyes said, my old eyes. Right. So we are now.
And a vote, please?
Woo!
Vote.
All right. We're now at the vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Opposed? And now we are on to, woo-hoo, the manager's report.
Yes, the oak wilt update, the second tree that was suspect came back negative. So that's good. We don't know, it's declining for other reasons, but it's not oak wilt. So, but we did, we took care of the other one. The, also include correspondence, there's a copy of the Fall Newsletter that came out, trying to push people to fill out the census if they've not already done that. Included information on masking and gatherings. And on the last page of the newsletter, there's also a link to our communications survey. Hopefully, we're, got a few answers. Hopefully, we'll see a few more of those. I don't think it's, it's gone out in the mail yet, so you got an advanced copy. But we are trying to gather more information on our communications. With that, everybody, I think everybody knows Burnell Road is temporarily closed. We're working on the intersection out there. Will probably be closed until the end of October, but we'll have a nice new intersection when it's all said and done out there. Then I included some comments that I'd gathered over since the last meeting on masking, gathering, and duplexes in the R2, which is, we've not considered anymore. Again, Census 2020, when I think I wrote this last week, the deadline was September 30th. There was a court injunction, also recently that may or may not extend that to October. But if you have not replied to the census, please do so. It's for all of us. Counts. If you do nothing else but give them how many people live in your house, that's all the information you need to provide. Obviously, we'd like all the information, but as much as you're willing to give, feel comfortable giving, and as much as you know, please do. And if you have questions about any of the other stuff, let me know.
Well, that was quick. Okay. So we're on to committee.
Madam Chair.
Oh, nah. Hold on. I changed my screen here inadvertently. Yes, that'd be neat.
Yeah. I have a question. I noticed under the upcoming events that you, this township office has an early close on Christmas Eve, but on New Year's Eve, you're open the whole day. I don't know how the budget handles things, but seems like a lot of businesses do an early close on New Year's Eve. And I don't know if it's important for tax filings or other things that the full staff be there, but since New Year's Eve often is kind of a risky night to go driving even home with weather and, and parties and stuff. I'm just wondering, down the line, would it cost the township so much to have an early close on New Year's Eve as well as the one on Christmas Eve? That was just odd.
We can, we can consider that.
I didn't hear any groans over there.
Put the manager in a tough spot there.
Yeah. Good question. Okay. So now we are on to committee reports, and we'll talk, we will first look at the COG committees. Human Resources, Anita, you have a reporting close. Do you also wish to summarize?
I put, I put it in writing so as not to take time verbally. You can, it was attached as a written thing to the agenda. So that is my report.
Great. Thank you. Great, thank you. And Pam, Public Safety, that just yesterday.
Yes, Public Safety, we had the election of the Vice Chair. Can you hear me? Just making sure.
Yes.
The resignation of our Chair, Dan Murphy, left an opening for our successor, who is Laura Denini from Ferguson. It also moved her up and left a vacancy in the Vice Chair, which Paul Tackett was nominated, and we elected to be our Vice Chair for the Public Safety Committee. Congratulations to Laura Denini as Chair and Paul Tackett as our Vice Chair. Articles of Agreement for the Center Region Building and Housing Code. The Board of Appeals was presented by Walter. There was no recommendation changes except a spelling error. The final check will be passed draft to the General Forum to discuss and move forward to modification of the article. Action that was taken to pass the article to the General Forum and to look forward to the modification of the article. Next was, on the agenda was the safe, the sale of the fire police vehicle to Bellefonte Thurl. Chief Steve Bear explained that there was sale of two fire police vehicles to Bellefonte. The vehicle was taken out of service in January. The first vehicle will be picked up this Friday, September 11th, and the second vehicle will be picked up the following week. In accordance to the capital improvement and replacement plan, two fire police vehicles were retired from service and replaced and will be replaced the start of the current year. Both vehicles were removed due to a significant mechanical issue. One of the two units was involved with a vehicle accident prior to the removal of service. The sale of the COVID fire vehicle to another municipality is not uncommon. The sales are permitted by law to another municipality without seeking bids, and as long as sales are fair market value. The Public Safety Committee recommends the sale of the two fire police units to Bellefonte. And this motion was passed. The final, now I won't say my final report, but the proposed for part-time hire regional fire protection, the chief said, explained that the fire director suggested the hire of a courier assistant chief to pick up some of the slack that concerned operations and to continue with support for the volunteer base. The chief was waiting on the study of the regional fire protection program. Then they would make a decision after the review. Chief will be presenting this proposal to the financial committee this week. And finally, the amendment, okay, the budget amendment purchased a tanker. The tanker 52 is slated to be replaced next year. It was explained that they have an opportunity to save COG $35,000 by addressing this issue now. They have $508,000 budgeted for the replacement of a tanker. And if ordered before October, they could, can come under budget on this project with a bid of $464,173, with a savings of $43,827. The motion, the action was a motion that the financial committee has recommended by the Public Safety Committee to authorize issuance orders that would encumber the $463,173 as identified in the 2020 COG budget. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much for that. I have a report from the TAG, the Technical Advisory Committee. It's not listed on the agenda there. They are going through a series of forums, the holding, to get information from what they call the community and the stakeholders after the, in response to the greenhouse gas emissions report. So, the agriculture, even though it only results in about 5% of the greenhouse gas emissions, it still is an important element because of the agricultural land in the Center Region. We talked, some interesting things, going, for example, to perennial agriculture and waste and fuel programs, which are actually quite expensive. But the most interesting comment, I thought, was from the Extension Service personnel, and then there were other support agencies across the state and across the nation who called into this virtual meeting. And they stressed the importance of providing information to farmers who would be adapting new processes, but also the importance of encouraging and sort of following through with help and answering questions, and also long-term data follow-up. So.
I have a report on Finance Committee.
Oh, I thought, that today? Wait, I thought today was the ninth.
We're meeting tomorrow, but.
Go ahead.
Last month, the Finance Committee was also scheduled to be after our board meeting. So, there are a couple of things I wanted to bring up to, to us. In August, the main things that I wanted to mention were simply that I had shared with the Finance Committee Patent Township Board's decision to, to help support the. Irrigation. Irrigation system of Whitehall Road Regional Park. And we also established the dates for the Finance Committee budget reviews for the 2021 budget. So, we have those dates identified. First one will be Thursday, September 24th at 8:30 a.m. Second would be Wednesday, September 30th at 8:30 a.m. Third one will be the following day, Thursday, October 1st at 8:30 a.m. And with a provisional fourth meeting, if necessary, on Thursday, October the 8th at 8:30 a.m. As far as the agenda for tomorrow's Finance Committee meeting, there were, there are going to be a few action items. On the very first one, 2021 Program Plan and Capital Improvement Plan Comments Review, there were three questions that we're going to be asked to vote on. The first is whether to fund a strategic planning process in the 2021 budget. There were mixed responses from the municipalities. Our responses was that this is something that could be deferred to 2022, given the expectation of reduced municipal revenues because of the COVID economic impact this year. So, given, if the board is consistent, wishes me to go ahead and state our, that we have kept our position that we should not do this next year, that's what I'll vote. No objections? Okay, the second one is whether or not to hire a recording secretary. Our position was that, again, this is a new staff position, and it should be deferred to 2022. So, if the board doesn't have any change of mind on that, that's what I'll vote. Do you have a question?
Elliot.
Can't somebody just put an iPhone on the table and record it that way?
No, somebody has, this is for someone to write out the minutes of every COG committee. Now, it's the professional staff who are doing, writing out, writing the minutes.
Which is a considerable investment of time.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever is the fastest.
Well, our position was, again, it's not the time to add new employees or new programming for the 2021. All right, and the third was, there was a question about, there was a $13,000 fund for a facility study fund. There was an existing fund called Facility Study Fund, and they were evaluating the COG office building. And they did, they used $13,000 out of that study fund to pay for window refurbishment in the building, which was not, therefore, it was not used for the study, but that was used for some building maintenance repairs. They wanted to know whether they should, we should put that $13,000 back into the study fund or not. My, my view is that, again, let's still put money into where we don't really need it this coming year. We need to keep our budget lean, so if the board doesn't have any objection, that's what I'll vote.
Works for me.
Nope, seeing none, okay. That's all I need to say.
And I, yes, we're now at the TLU, Transportation and Land Use. Pam, do you, oh, that's coming up, sorry.
We're not due to September the 14th.
Yeah, so that's coming up. But we do, oh, we do have a report from you, no, that's the 27th, I beg your pardon. These are all upcoming, these are the dates. We're on to, oh, Other Business, I believe. Did I miss anything before Other Business? Any votes I forgot to ask for? So, I do have an item under Other Business with apologies to the person who I'm going to recommend for a particular appointment. I, for some reason, email I sent earlier to Doug, didn't go through, it didn't go through twice this morning, we got it. The business is this, though. The last General Forum, we heard a proposal from Amy Farkas, who's the Township Manager of Harris. And the proposal was for the Helping Happy Valley Initiative, which is essentially for the elected officials in COG to put their collective brain power together and see what COG can do to help the businesses in the Center Region who have suffered greatly from the COVID situation. So, Amy Farkas asked then that each municipality would elect somebody to sit on the committee. And I, much to my delight surprise, received an email the following day from somebody, I'm totally unsolicited, but somebody who was volunteering for this position. And in full disclosure, this is a good friend of mine, I worked with him, his name is Chris Buchanan. I worked with him in 2013 to get secure community support for the state high, high school project, which many of you, if you were here for you, remember, was quite successful. He is someone, I shared his biography with board members or through Doug. He has been a resident since 1997. He, as he said, he's devoted much of his life to improving the community and advocating for greater knowledge and appreciation of its story. He's both highly motivated, he's very well experienced, he has his own business in market research, he's a writer and editor. He's done broadcasting, somebody who may have heard him, he's the, well, on the obligatory PSU program show, podcast. I'm not a football fan, I haven't listened to it, sorry, Chris. But he is, oh, the founder of the Nittany Valley Society, which recently merged with Mountain Nittany Conservancy. I could go on probably for another half hour, but I don't think I need to. What I'm asking is, with the board approval, I would like to recommend that he be appointed as our representative on this committee.
I would say yes.
That in form of a motion, or?
Yes.
And a second, and any votes or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call up with question. All those who support the appointment of Chris Buchanan as the representative from Patent Township on the committee called Helping Happy Valley Initiative, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much. And I think, do we need a?
So moved.
I love these photos. Thank you, Doug, this is new. Did you want to say?